Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting? Any questions or corrections? Motion to go through.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Kathy, any motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? opposed. And I'm staying with you. Approval of claims and payroll? Any questions for Gina on claims and payroll?
I'll make a motion to approve the claim to payroll.
Shirley made a motion to approve both claims and payroll as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
From second. All in favor? opposed? Motion taken. Anything on the Blight Hill Nation project?
Yeah, the only thing we'll discuss was the sidewalk project.
Speaker and app update?
So I got a quote from Sweetwater. I had, he wanted to know what we're currently using. So Tim, obviously, is going to put that speaker down and everything, what it wants. And they sent that to this Tyler, who said Sweetwater. Then he sent back a proposal for a PA system. I had Tim review it, just to kind of get, because I don't have a clue. So if you guys have questions, I can contact Tyler Sweetwater and then make some changes or ask him questions. But Tim thought, he took a look over it and thought the amp size was appropriate for this building and the town park room.
The price seems reasonable. Especially compared to-
It was better than what I anticipated. What does the paper say? So, sorry, the Fender Audio Passport PA System for $839.99. Onstage stand speakers, the backpack, $124.95. And then Sure Dynamic Vocal Mic Pack, $129. So the total quote was $1,093.94. But the amp, I believe, that we currently use, I think Tim said it was like $650. This was for something, and he thought it was suitable. Because he thought we had plenty of power. At movie night, I don't know, but your thoughts, that he thought-
I thought that movie night was-
This system was fine.
Yeah.
But this is a little bit less, but he thinks it should be sufficient. So I would go, do you want me to get a quote for a higher amp size, or just go with what he's recommending?
I would think if this person's recommending it, and Tim also agrees with it, that I am comfortable with their recommendation.
Should I have, is it Mr. Noah that I spoke to, just to get an idea of what his thoughts would be, or? I don't know. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with the opinion that he gave about it.
Does it hurt to get?
No, I don't, I don't think we're under that kind of time restraints, but it wouldn't hurt to get another opinion or another quote.
Just double check, and Kevin's familiar with-
Yeah.
With that, so I'd say check with him, and if, if he says yeah, it sounds good to, three people tell us yes.
And if you have any questions, I can, I plan on speaking with him again, so-
Okay.
If there's something specific you want me to ask her about, I can-
So there are motions to table?
I'll make a motion to table the Sweetwater quote.
Kathy, any motions to table? Second?
Yes, I see.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion taken. Kids to Park Day proclamation?
So last meeting, council did vote to approve the Kids to Parks Day proclamation, so that is just, I made it specific for Brookville from their template that they had given. So if you guys are still good with that, then we can go ahead and sign the proclamation.
National Kids, Kids to Parks Day, National Park Trust proclamation. Whereas Nation 1st, 2022, is a 12 Kids to Park Day, recognized and launched by the National Park Trust Health Annual on the 3rd Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day, our as kids encourages family to get outdoors and visit local parks, public plants, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, muscle, hyper, hyper, close-
Gastrolymia.
Neurological? No, severe enough.
She's an educator.
We'll be looking that up.
And whereas Kids to Park Day, we grow, will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now, therefore, the Brookville Town Council is hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022, as Kids to Park Days. Passed and adopted by the Untertying Town Council of the Town of Brookville, Indiana, on this 19th day of April, 2022.
So it will officially pass the amendment again? I'm not sure. Grant, does it matter?
We've already voted on it.
Did you do, did you vote on it before, or?
Yes, we did last meeting to prepare it.
We voted again.
You can vote it again, vote it again, I don't think there's anything-
So is there a motion to approve the proclamation, as read by Brooke?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Proclamation, motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion taken. So we previously discussed the May 3rd council meeting, the, the primary, is that dead? They'll be hosting the, the dot com here. Do we still want to have a meeting on that Tuesday, or do you want to?
I feel like that'd be really delicate. I would prefer not to have it.
You don't think so? Do we want to push it back for two weeks, or do we want to push it back a couple days? Fall in week?
We do it fall in a week, and then catch back up at the ordinary rotation after that.
We have two meetings in a row, but that's okay. I mean-
The 10th work for-
Yeah, it's fine.
10th work for you, Shirley?
The May 10th, okay, the following week.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So is there a motion to cancel the May, or to move the May 3rd council meeting to May 10th?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy makes a motion to move May 3rd council meeting to May 10th. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Just advertise like a special meeting. Is that why I did that for you?
It would basically be the same as a special meeting, because you're just going to want to post it, send it out to the media, so I would just say that that's postponed.
Okay.
You might want to stick one on the door down here that day, in case somebody goes to show up that night.
Coffee on Main Car Show, so the Brookville Car Club contacted me, and they are wanting to do a car show in the lot adjacent to Coffee Off Main, or Coffee on Main. They would like to do this on Saturday, April 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and they're requesting that the town forego any parking meter fees that morning.
Does the benefits, Coffee Off Main, do they get the benefits, or are they doing the actual?
No, it's just they're-
Because it's next to their-
It's in their, it's in their next to the lot, so they're going to do a car show, then people can grab coffee.
Gotcha.
But it's, it's just a car show. Coffee Off Main, On Main is not hosting it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine. No, it's the Brookville Car Club that's hosting it, in that parking lot. They like to do, I don't, have they done it on Main Street before?
I think they've been in the Firestone, at one time, weren't they in the Firestone lot?
I thought they were in one of them.
Or something like Main Street Night, or, I don't-
They did do like a drive down Main Street, and also in Alamo.
They saw the beat-
What was, sorry, the date and time?
April 30th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. I think it sounds good to get people on Main Street.
Yeah.
Any other feedback on that?
I think it's a good idea.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second it.
Shirley second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion taken. Brent?
Thanks for the opportunity. The street department through the last eight to 10 months has gone through different employees, for one reason or the other, either through retirement, or other positions through the town, for most recent, this Friday, we're losing one for whose name. During all this time, I kind of realized that we're down to right now, Rocky and myself, as far as full-time employees, and we have Tim Wobbe as a part-time employee. So I feel a need to kind of get back to where we were after all this, because things, in my opinion, have kind of been neglected from what I see. I would like to go ahead and, Tim would accept the position, an open position, and hire another full-time person, because we lost our two backhoe operators. So I'd like to advertise that, and if accepted, there's just a lot going on, you know? And I've talked about three full-time employees, not count myself, okay, so before. But during the, during the years, like spring, summer, you know, there's a lot going on to take care of what happened during the winter, to fix up, you know, and plus all the load and all that, whether it's patching, water cuts, or whatever. So, and then guys take vacations, get sick once in a while, you know, and of course, we help all the other departments out when we can, or usually always do. So they fill in overtime there too, so, you know, I fill in for that or whatever. So that's my recommendation for full-time, for full-time employees. Part-time is good. We had a guy help us out here for two or three years. But we had a project, it was our street signs, our regulatory signs, you know, they sign posts and all that, so he knew it. For part-time, that's good, because it came in every day. He didn't have to be training on something at all times, which really helps, you know? If it's a rainy day, you know, hey, stay home that day, you know, come in the next day. You know, to me, that's where the good part-time help comes in. Not that they can't come and help with other things, you know, but there's a training process, plus the experience of working with everybody. So, and all I said, you know, I appreciate being full-time employees, if possible.
How, how many did you say you, you would like to have?
Three, not counting myself.
And you, if I'm not mistaken, have lost like five within the past six, seven months, haven't you?
Four or five.
Maybe a year?
Right.
To retirement, movement?
Correct. Yep, to retirement.
Reassignment?
Brett went to the golf course, he had his wife went back to the-
Right.
Sure planned, and Adam.
And then Bill retired, right? Bill?
Bill retired.
He retired.
Yeah, he retired. So right now, after, you know, this probably, we can have Rocky and myself, as far as full-time employees, and Tim would like to take over for full-time.
Is Tim, is he an operator?
Yes and no. I would say he's good with front bucket, but back bucket, on this server, you know, it's kind of like me, I guess I can run, but there's a difference between running and operating. You know, so, I mean, I, like myself, will be enough to be a slide on some things, but when we're out, let's say a water leak, you know, we have, we have a, a water line break, you know, if somebody's out of utilities, you know, it's kind of like all hands on deck. You really need a skilled person, because you're dealing with sick water, gas, you know, gas lines, fiber optic, you know, of course, water. It could be a sewer line, whatever, this could get pretty, pretty touching, so.
What's the hour, how many hours does full-time employee work for, for your department? Forty? Forty?
You know, so, you know, I realize through all this, I've kind of, I've kind of taken away from things, you know, just because, you know, you know, keep up with everything, so.
Well, the visitor season, starting up, I think, I think the town should look immaculate like it usually does. And I think if you need people to make that happen, I'm all for it.
Well, we go through the seasons, you know, I mean, we got to, you take, now, I mean, you know, we're just busy with everybody.
Yes.
Too many things that we can talk about.
Yeah.
Exactly, but, you know, you talk about fall, we have Lee, that takes three guys, you know, somebody missing, you know, I'm, I'm, so myself, like player manager, you know, I'm out there, I work with guys, plus, you know, take phone calls, go back to the desk, or whatever I'm going to do. Wintertime, we have four trucks with salt blocks on them, and we're not salt blocks, I'm sorry, clouds, three salt boxes. So we try to hit, you know, as many areas as we can, you know, for the safety of the people. You know, and Brett, last winter, was very good, you know, of course, it was a mild winter, but, you know, we have a skid over here, so actually, we have five pieces of equipment that we could use here in Brookville, you know, to, to keep the streets clean in wintertime, plus working on equipment. You know, that's a, now we got a new garage, thank you very much for that, very nice. We have to really work on, you know, more than one piece of equipment at a time, you know, to keep these guys busy all winter long, you know, doing things, that type of thing.
Winter's what concerns me the most, I mean, because we'll have, we have Brett and Charlie, and, you know, Charlie's a mechanic, could work on quite a bit of that. Brett obviously fills in quite a bit in the wintertime as well, so that's, that'll be my main concern, is that I think that we are, do we, do we advertise for help with the water with Andy?
We just did utilities, so it's open-ended, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're going to look at the, the overall net number, excluding the golf course, not, not including that, of what we were before, and see, I mean, we've got two guys down at the wastewater, we'll have two guys at the water office, and I know that we interchange those. I don't want to get so heavy that in the wintertime, we have all the guys looking for something to do, whereas, then maybe we could potentially do, you know, part-time help now, even two to three guys, when it's the really, really business season.
Well, I can, pretty much, I was planning to do, I would go, for something, you know, you know, new service and everything in the wintertime. You know, we were looking to get an addition, we decided, well, I'm on, we've been, you know, short of help, but, you know, like, we service everything, you know, very little, not very often, something gets subcontracted, subcontracted out, or whatever, I mean, you know, Rocky and the guys just work on everything, you know, like, anywhere for breaks, I mean, you know, you're talking candy, so, I mean, but, yeah.
I think your department has been a little bit decimated, and we have to bring it back up to where it was. I'm open to whatever the budget will allow us to do. I do think you definitely need to bring the person that's part-time up to full-time, and you definitely need a backhoe operator. So those two things, I think, are the most important.
I'd like to see, you know, at least the, the backhoe operator for, if we get that from the water department, because that's where majority of the operations come into play, right? In terms of an operator, I mean, you're going to need it most of the water, sewer, street, yeah.
You know, to make back for that, it's safe, you know, guys get used to working with each other, you know, he brings away a part-time, whatever, you know, but they're there too. So that's a, that's just kind of a big thing for us, you know, everybody knows what to do when we're, you know, working with each other, whether it's on the streets, or wherever, or even working on equipment, you know, everybody just gets used to each other, and know what each other's going to do. So, you know, safety for me is probably a big issue.
Jesse, you interviewed somebody for utilities, did they have any backhoe operating experience?
He had some experience on some equipment, but it wasn't, I don't know, I mean, I would say no. I would say he had some experience, but I don't know how much.
Someone walking down.
Yeah.
You know, when we had previous operators, you know, that was their purpose, to operate for the town. You know, Rocky's a very talented guy, you know, I'm sure, you know, operators pay or whatever, you know, putting him on there, I'm sure he can pick it up quick. But, I don't know, that's something he gets to do or not, but.
I, I think minimum, we need to bump up the part-time guy to full-time. He, he was one of the ones that you interviewed with Brett, too.
Correct.
So he's went through the process, screened the process with Tim and Brent before. I think, did you say that one of you guys sounded interviewed him, or?
Jack did.
Okay. So I think minimum, we need to do that, and then I would be comfortable going ahead and advertising it for part-time immediately, until we figure out, look at the, the numbers with Jess and Gina, and see where we are net for this year's budget, and come up with a solution next meeting, if, if that's okay with you for the time being.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, like I said, I feel the need for it, but, you know, if we do what we can, like we have in the past, you know, I'm saying something, I might get the right to be over there. And I can't go down the street without seeing something, probably needs, could be done, but, you know, I've already taken away a few places, I mean, you should take care of a little bit, you know, every week, like, almost a month or something, you know, just because of, you know.
Brent, how many employees did you, excuse me, how many employees did you have at the, when you had the most employees?
Three.
Three.
Four, yeah, four, kind of, seven, three, so that's what I'm asking.
Four, so four total.
Four total, yeah.
And now you just have two and one part-time, that's what you have now.
Yeah.
You, Rocky, and a part-time.
Correct. As of Friday, after Friday, yes, you know.
Okay.
Correct. And like I said, you know, during, you know, some, always sometime during the year, you know, like I said, we take off for, maybe at comp, or maybe a sit, or vacation, you know, you spread that out, and.
I think you guys do an amazing job with the, the way the park looks, and the surrounding areas, this building. I think everything looks amazing, and I really applaud your, your department for the job that you do.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And, you know, the other champion, you know, so I would like to keep that around in the, three parties, so we can keep that.
So do we have a motion to approve?
So that's what we're looking at, approving to bump the part-time up to full-time. Go ahead and immediately advertise for part-time help, but consider a full-time person after Gina looks at the numbers to see if we have the budget this year.
So if the budget, you know, if we can squeeze it into the budget, it'll be a full-time employee, if not, it'll be a part, another part-time employee. That makes sense?
Excuse me, haven't we already budgeted for the upcoming year?
Yeah.
For help, for the boys?
Budgeted for Dwight, Dwight?
Right.
When Dwight moved, we were not, we were budgeting Dwight moving.
Was that after Dwight moved?
The budget that was. So we just have to look at the numbers, see what we have this year. I'm not, I'm not opposed to whatever you guys need, I just think that the same structure that we have, the golf course, and with the pool, when it's season, heavily seasonally based, we have two other full-time guys that are coming down in the wintertime to help out with that, I just want to be cognizant of that. I don't think that we're telling you that you shouldn't have your help, we just want to make sure that it's the right help. I, I wouldn't advocate for hiring two or three full-time guys at the golf course to work heavily during the summer, or the spring, summer, fall, and then have less to do in the wintertime. And I think, that's what I'm trying to play it to, so if we're taking care of 173 acres up there, with mostly part-time seasonal help, I just want to make sure that we're considering that before going back to the way that we used to do everything. That's the reason we've changed up some of the structures or departments, to make sure that it's efficient, and it's, it's good, good use. Not that we're trying to make your department, so Lee, I wanted to have the help, I just think that maybe we look at that differently, like the state does, in the summertime, their properties that they maintain, they don't have the full-time, they have the summer help, so.
So then, getting from what you're saying is, there will be two people moving down to help with the street department stuff in the winter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was the whole idea of that project being, you know, efficient for the town, is that we have that ability to move them down in the wintertime like Brett did last year, and if it needed more structure, then we can have that conversation, but I, I'm not one to rush back into the way that we've done something, just because it's the way we used to do it. However, I want you to be staffed the best that we can, just as efficiently as we can with, for the town's funds. If we can get three guys that are helping in the summer to offload that, and then the spring and the fall, that could be a better use of money than hiring one full-time guy to work year-round. It's all, all in one consider before we make a decision. And if, we may go back to your mod, it may be the right one, I don't know, but I don't have the information in front of me to be able to make that decision tonight, is all I'm saying.
So you're saying hire one full-time?
Move the guy up to full-time, I mean, we have a guy that's leaving this Friday, he's two people down there, I think that is, obviously, we have to have someone, three full-time guys, so it's the absolute minimum that we need there, and it's not enough, and I don't want to push you three weeks down the road, but I also, I can't make that decision without having numbers in front of me, just.
So then, we have a part-time person?
Yeah.
So we have staff the way we are now?
Yeah, I can, minimum, we have to keep what we have now, so advertise for part-time with the expectation that it could go to full-time. You know, it's not a promise, but there, there is a strong possibility that we, we get you before full-time guys again. I think the challenge that we've had the last two years, is that we've had departments where people are retiring out, there, there was really no transition of planning for that, and then we had some issues in the department, we had to move people around, so we had to be flexible to try to accommodate that, and then we've had a couple unexpected resignations, and then now moving Andy back to the water, trying to get him staffed again, making sure that Dwight's staffed on there, and I know that the street department has, has ultimately run with that, I, I don't want to downplay that at all, I mean, I know that you guys have. So we're, we're trying to figure those pieces out, create a system that, that works for the town, and, and just try to be as efficient as we can without limiting doing that, and I appreciate you coming and telling us that, hey, you know, there's some things that we can't get to, and we don't want to hear that, so we'll look into it and give us answer as soon as possible. And if we look into it, and if the board's okay, if the numbers look great, you know, we can, we can always authorize or pre-approve you to hire full-time guys, assuming that Gina sets the budget that she's good.
Here's my little concern. If you go advertising for a, a part-time position, you may not catch a very, very cheap fish. Are you willing or not? And, and like Brett was saying, with the safety concerns, I mean, who would want to want part-time today? Somebody like me, some old guy like me, yeah, I'll do it. You know, what I'm saying? I, I don't, I don't know if he can get what he needs at part-time, that's the only thing I'm saying. As far as the safety goes, it's somebody that is going to be committed to do that job.
I mean, that could be.
I mean, I, I don't know, I just- I mean, I, I don't know, I just, that's what I feel.
I think we need an employee with skills, um, like to run the backhoe and run the equipment. And I think we've lost that, and I think we need to replace that. Now, I don't know if that's gonna require, uh, having a, the salary based on the skills. We may have to do some changes in the, in the salary ordinance, but I think that's a need. You have to have good people to run the equipment safely, so that would be a priority.
Definitely an expectation for the, the water works department, I mean, to get someone in there. That, I, I just want to get to the point where we were, we, we, we've changed for a reason the last couple of years, and, um, I don't want to get to the point where we're right back to that after what we've done.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, but I also think that that's a priority to have, um, equipment off there.
Oh, I too. I think that, that's where, if, if we're hiring for the water department, they're gonna be using it for the water.
They can, they can be interchangeable within the department, just like we already have. So they can work for the water, in sewage, and park, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So, Larry?
So, if I think I'm summarizing it right, we're wanting to move the part-time person to full-time position, immediately advertise for a part-time position. Have Gina look to see if we can move that to a full-time position with the budget, and make sure the person that we hired for the utilities department has backhoe experience and can run backhoe. Correct.
Sounds...
Yes.
How many hours a week is full-time?
Forty for that area.
Forty, okay.
Rocky doesn't have backhoe experience. Just, just luck.
I think what Brent explained to me is that we had two employees that were hired with the skills to run the backhoe, someone else really got the chance to learn because those people were hired to run it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Tim's been on the two, I mean, he's seen the owner of the house. It's just off the list to have. When we need them to, you know, because usually, street department is the first place, you know, the other departments come to, they ask for, you know, help or what they need, and, and we're there. And, you know, we have a backhoe there and everything on the equipment, so...
Is Charlie's ever, we have backhoe experience?
Oh, okay. He does?
Does. That's why, that would save us. Then you could.
Any other questions, discussion?
So does Brett have backhoe experience?
I don't think so.
Yes. Does Brett have?
I think so.
I think so too.
I mean, I've seen it. So in a emergency situation? For now.
But still, Brett and Tim?
Oh, yeah, I was saying Tim.
I agree, it's important to get someone in there. I think that's definitely a priority. When did Rocky come on?
Three weeks ago.
Okay.
So we're wanting to move the part-time up to full-time, then advertise for...
Is that effective immediately?
I'm sorry.
Effective immediately on that?
And then advertise for a part-time, with the understanding they could go for a part.
Can we just wait and not advertise for a part-time? Wait, and if the funds are there, just advertise for a full-time person? Instead of...
I guess I'm thinking, of course, like you said, in the fall, well, at what point do you stop, you know? I don't know any of that information, so maybe it might be feasible to have a conversation with somebody who does. Because then maybe some of those part-time people could, if they're starting, start working in the fall.
I think they have a lot of work in the fall, right before the season ends, just to prepare to last season. Once someone gets here, it's pretty much Charlie Mason working on everything. Let's wait.
Let's wait.
Wasn't work?
Has been. That is a good idea, though, where you can switch some of those people over in the fall time too.
I don't know, it's Charlie, he just has a pay mark, he'll have a backhoe.
I don't know. So was your, whose suggestion was it to not advertise?
I just said maybe we should wait to see if the funding's there before we advertise. Instead of advertising for a part-time when you may need a full-time.
I mean, are we gonna need part-time help anyways this summer? We always have part-time help every year.
Yeah, as you said.
Yeah, so I think we could go ahead and advertise for a part-time, and if that's not a good candidate for full-time, then we hire for the full-time.
Okay.
I mean, typically we have two, I mean, one to two guys at least on part-time.
If you get a part-time, you might as well probably two part-time, I think, I don't know, I'm gonna figure this a little bit. I'm also gonna work a lot on one, uh, full-time, you know, because, I think, two part-time has, you know, thirty hours or whatever, that can be close. Pretty close, uh...
It does, the insurance is what bumps it up, the benefit package, about twenty-two. Okay. So is there a motion to, anybody wanna make a, a, a motion?
I will make a motion to bump the part-time help to a full-time help, to effective immediately, immediately advertise for part-time help. Have Gina look into the budget to see if we can have it in the budget to add a full-time person, and then we can be known of that at the next meeting.
Sounds good. Brooke made that motion, it's her second to that motion.
I'll second.
Kathy, second, all in favor? Toast?
Okay, I have one more thing.
Okay.
This is what, uh, I've been here since two thousand eight, as far as, you know, you know, this position. Rocky's been here quite a while, he's down here and I, and as far as full-time, I know Tim, I spoke to him about wanting a full-time. There's just been a lot of changes through the years, a lot of new organizations come on, good organizations that, you know, may ask, uh, you know, I don't have time to know if we can help out, whether it's on Main Street or whatever, you know, whether it be the park, or wherever it's at, uh, through the years, they keep adding that too. Uh, workforces got me smaller, uh, you know, phone calls, you know, in the evenings I get calls anywhere from handling the road, checking sewer, you know, uh, but, uh, so, plus with the, uh, the economy, you know, like, sort of food one in nine percent, uh, gas up thirty percent, all that type of thing. So I guess what I'm asking is if a five percent raise, uh, and maybe, uh, new employees share, step them up, you know, I kind of, I don't know, that's all up to your guys' decision, but, uh, kind of get, you know, if you hire somebody, you know, start them out at a regular level, and after sixty days, you know, they get to the level of right now, and then give them incentive, get to the next level, uh, so, I'm also asking for that.
I think I...
And like I said, it's, it's not easy, fact for me to do, but, uh, you know, things just change as we go along.
I think that it's fair to advocate, you know, doing a great work, to ask, come to the board and ask those things that are still, look best for your department and then. I would be open to giving you and Rocky the five percent raise, but waiting on the additional help until they, they last those ninety days to see if they're running through the probationary period first. Um, but I would be open to entertaining the, the raise for the two, you and Rocky, who are still able to help.
But I think we could potentially look at the salary ordinance and see how we can separate just regular versus skilled operators.
Separate it?
If there's a greater... You did.
Well, I, I know we currently looked at Amy because of the changes within your office, so I think it's only fair that, I mean, Brent's department has gone through a myriad of changes, and they have weathered the storm, so I think we should, I would definitely be in favor of giving them a raise.
I do like what Chris was presenting about maybe having different steps in honor salary ordinance for the different skill levels of employees and those qualifications of the backhoe.
So currently there, he's on one line item, he's superintendent.
Right.
And Rocky is also, because he's mechanic slash operator, so there are, you know, different, well, I don't know, labor would be...
So we already have that.
If, if you look at, you know, if you look at the street side, then it's, it's, um, mechanic and labor are different line items or salary.
You need a motion?
I do.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, effective immediately on the next payroll to give a five percent increase to Brent, uh, the park superintendent, and Rocky, the operator.
Mechanic.
Slash...
Mechanic.
Mechanic.
Kathy made a motion to a three to five percent raise for the two employees. Is there a second? Kathy, all in favor? Close motion, Kathy. Thank you. Uh, building permit nine sixty for the fire department, they want to install an electric sign. And that this would be right here in the grass strip out front, um, they'll be able to post different community events. It is six foot four tall, about one foot wide, or depth, um, six foot wide.
We see that you know, tend to mention that within our code, the town code, it's one foot four inches too high, so we didn't know if we approved it, what the county will do, I don't know.
I talked to Mark about that tonight. Mark said that he talked to Cindy and Mouse, and they said as long as we approve, it's compliant with the county's code, so as long as we approve that variance, um, then they would approve it as well. That's the latest that I got from them today. Right, sound good.
If that's what, yeah, if that's what it's all to the county, I was going to say, if you need to have a contingent upon county approval, you could do that, but if they've already cleared it, that's fine.
I think they, I mean, they would be the next step on, they have to apply for something of their, they said that we have to do this one too, so we can make it a contingent upon county approval. Any questions or thoughts?
I think it looks nice, I, no, yeah.
This is where they have, you know, sewer pricing.
Um, they're, they're paying for it. If they're using what that...
I don't need to know it, that's...
I think they're using some of their funds from the reverse draft for the golf course.
Definitely nice, like they have in breakfast, if they'd like that, and they would...
Yeah, I do too.
Draw your attention.
A little solid, they have now.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Uh, motion to approve, subject to county approval?
I'll make a motion to approve if, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Kathy, second, all in favor? Close motion, Kathy. Uh, building permit nine sixty-one, Richard Bishop, this is for fifty-four East Butler Street. Building a covered porch on the side of his house.
Tim reviewed the motions.
What did he say?
Tim reviewed, and he did the same issues.
It's hard to tell if it's wrong, because he has it drawn to the property line.
Yeah.
He talked to Mr. Bishop, so he said, which one are you looking at?
The, uh, the orange area.
The orange area?
It's highlighted all the way to the property line. There's a post four feet from the property line, but it looks like the deck goes all the way to the property line. Quarter of this truck. I mean, we can approve it, contingent upon reading satisfactory setback requirements, and the county will, will view this next. Other than that, it looks fine. It just, it's unclear with the drawing where the structure goes, and if it actually sits on the property line, if it shows.
I just, what, Tim just said he spoke to Mr. Bishop, and there was that issue. He just want clarification on the property line?
Yeah, I recommend that we, we approve it, subject to satisfactory setback requirements and county approval. And then the county will review this on the next step and make sure that it doesn't have setbacks. And if not, then they'll have it corrected on the drawing or corrected in actuality.
So I would make a motion to approve, uh, building permit nine sixty-one, contingent upon having appropriate setbacks and county approval. Right. So I'll make a motion to approve, building permit nine sixty-one, contingent upon having appropriate setbacks and county approval.
I second that.
Uh, Brooke made a motion, Chuck second, all in favor? Close motion, Kathy. Building permit nine sixty-two, this is for Lynette Whitner, uh, four seventeen East, East Eighth Street. This is the rear deck and the rear wheelchair ramp. What building? The numbers on the side.
There's no working piece of shit in the house, is there? Remember we had...
Is this the one that had the part-time issue?
I, maybe, I don't know.
Do you know?
I didn't hear you, before you said...
Because it does have...
If this is the one that has the meter up in front of their house, four seventeen East Eighth Street?
No, this is down below.
This is below?
That was seven.
Down below the hill? It was in the round, but I'm thinking of, up on the very top.
Right. But this address we have is four seventeen, so it would probably be further down the hill, you think?
That's Seventh Street, this is A Street. Right?
That was Seventh Street?
Yeah. This is A Street.
A Street?
Yeah, eight, eight.
Four thirteen.
Can't think of anything on eight.
Four, four seventeen.
A Street.
If it's a house, maybe, and I should just like...
Wouldn't be eight?
It'd be right here. So I know, I think they were thinking Seventh Street, the part-time issue. Yes, yes. That's A Street.
Yeah, but some would, I think, won't set the...
I don't know.
That's what we have decided on, though.
Yeah, that's what we're, yeah. I mean, if a setback requirement should be on this, I just can't tell from the drawing. I'm assuming it's what the...
There's numbers there.
Yeah. Yeah. See if it's the right line back, I agree, for the way I look back. Same thing, I think, on the last one, just verifies the setback requirements, okay, hard to tell if something's here wrong. Sketches.
Some people are not the artist they think they are, right?
Yeah. There are motions to approve, subject to setback requirements, satisfactory setback requirements?
I'll make a motion to approve application 962, subject to the setbacks.
Kathy made a motion to approve, subject to setback, there is second. Shirley second, all in favor? Close motion, Katie. Brooke, you're all grand?
Yes. So since the last year, we had a budget for our county foundation mural, and our winner was on Williams, so we will be working to get that mural up and running. But there was a second grant through the state of Indiana that I was going to apply for, that we had to hire a muralist to do some of the designs, but since we do not need that, Ross Togo, the local timberers, had reached out to me right after I launched the last competition to see if he could enter. Unfortunately, I already launched the competition, he missed the deadline. But he was interested in asking if he could remind if we had any other mural grants in us, and it just so happens that we do. So this is a letter that he wrote to me, he said, "Hey Brooke, here's my main goals of the work I've done in the past, a little history of my art, as well as a price break down for other residents. Let me know what else you need from me. I graduated from Franklin County High School in 2005, now for college. I really come back to visit friends if they find my name at the lake, the dairy cottage, and we never miss a canada, a festival in Medellin. I began making abstract art in 2019. I typically use wood for the mason's stone down and art over my Indianapolis. I've been fortunate enough to feature multiple Indianapolis monthly articles, Indianapolis business journal articles, news segments in Cincinnati, and featured, as well as being asked on a current podcast about speaking about my art and authorship. I opened a retail store in Indianapolis on my art, this feature, as well as other local artists and makers in Indiana. I recently saw a voting for a mural contest that Brooklyn was approved to fund, and I just missed a lot to submit to be considered. I'm writing this in hope to have my art featured in a town that I love so much. Recent data showed that the town of Brooklyn, Indiana has a population of 2,539 in 2019. My plan is to create a case using 2,539 individual pieces to represent every resident. This will be done using a four by sixteen foot canvas, which will have pieces attached, hand cut, painted, and clear ready to reflect the elements, and then attached to the buildings in French plates that will secure the piece." And then he goes right down the price for the art. So the grant for the state of Indiana is a non-hatchens grant, so the town would not have to put any money up, and we can get up to $5,000 if selected. But the deadline is Thursday. So I have been working on the speech to try to get, you know, my letters and from local timbers, and the sites where I would like to present the board to approve would be, it would be at the restrooms, the upper part, the backside of the restrooms. It's that brick building, and when you stand and look at it, you can see it from the pool, and you can see it from the playground, and you can see it from the side of the shopping center, and you can see it when you're driving, also from the Bonnysso Center. So part of that aspect of the grant is that we get a location that we have high viewing ability by the public. So we just featured one on each street side, we like to showcase another part of the community that's beautiful, and to get to showcase the other part and features that we have around today. So what I'm looking for is for people to submit the grant by Thursday. And if we are lucky enough to get it, it will be announced in May. The grant had this, the mural had to be done by October of this year. I have a letter from local timbers that they will have completed by the end of September if selected. I'd like permission to have it drilled, like with the French hooks, to be able to drill into the brick to secure it, do we get the grant?
Yeah, sounds wonderful.
I matched pieces of his work, you have all this, I guess.
Yeah.
Beautiful pieces, beautiful pieces, but they're very intricate and unique. I would love to see another mural.
Any questions for Brooke?
No, good luck, good luck.
Do you want to make that exit?
Okay, so I will make a motion for unauthorized to submit the grant for the mural, and also permission to drill and hang things that the mural will be, or left in us to get. Does that cover it?
Sounds good.
I'll second.
Let's see, five of her. Brooke made a motion, Kathy seconds, all in favor? Close motion, Katie. Farmers market.
That's me too. So I have had people in the community that have decided on the farmers' market, and that's going to be after the, I tend to accept when there's more weather. So I have people in the weekends, hopefully the warm weather coming, I'm going to have more people to ask when that's going to be started. So I have talked with Brett about the purpose and when that seems to be feasible, so we're talking to Brett and to comment in continuation when we have the last farmers' market. I would propose that we open the town of our farmers' market on June 4th this year, the first Saturday in June.
So you're doing the farmers' market again?
I think that Brett is going to.
And I have a firm one of one of the local sites that let us through the other one. Who do I go ready and prepare?
I'd love that, that would be so great. I would like to take a step back from being there every Saturday this year. I'm hoping that Brett has stepped up on weekends that he can do it, and hopefully on weekends if he can, other people can help me.
She's looking at you.
I love it sometimes, last year, some of the school on top of doing that, it was too much. But I even more than going to fulfill it with it. So what I was presenting was June 4th, would be the, would be the Friday.
Same time?
Yep.
Same place?
Same time, same place. Then fingers crossed we can keep it open later, and I've been talking to Brett too, about getting the pumpkin patch and some dollars to the upper part, so that we can have things to sell in the fall, and the farmers' market open in the fall this year. So I love that. Brett had a food supply in the summer. Another example, so I think Brett has proved to sell chicken. So we might have some poultry, who sell the farmers' market, yeah. I had probably five or six different vendors reach out, so. I know we had fresh eggs last year too, I think that we might have multiple fresh eggs this year, so. We'll bring them back. Chuck's food vendor would be an amazing addition, so.
I think so, if it works out. I did explain to him again, the last time I talked to him, that we do not want gasoline-operated generators. And he understood, and I told him, I said, "If you do that, we can try it for a week or two, but if we get any complaints, we can't let you do it anymore." Because it's calm, it's peaceful there. Unless we can put them around out in the back of, like Rosenberg's, where they're not echoing between the buildings. But he still never gave me a clear answer whether he was going with propane or electric.
Can you try it out and see what happens?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to open our first farmers' market on Saturday, June 4th. The good times was at 18:00. I'm sure in fact, it was 18:00. So 18:00, Saturday mornings, and municipal laws, starting June 4th.
So Brooke made a motion, is there a second? Get Shirley to know. All in favor? Close motion, Katie. Terry, you have your SOPs for the take home vehicles?
Yeah, I know we had discussions, I think the only thing that we had left is to add on to the favor would have been the officers, when they come into town and use the amenities, car wash, go to the grocery store, something of that nature, they would be allowed to drive that vehicle in here for officer presence on the street, and then what we come up with, with what you think is fair as far as the monthly gas bill that you want to start with, by the tenants, sergeants, and patrolmen. I'm recommending free, but I know we've already had discussions, and I know that we had discussed the possibility of it being a $50 fee per month, but I would, I think it would be fair if we went for $30 instead of the $50, and see how that works out. Now, I do know gas prices go up, go down, and I totally understand, but I'm also betting on that the maintenance cost with the vehicles is going to go down, and it's going to offset that with what I've talked to all the other chiefs. They said that that really offsets that, and no one charges for gas prices because of that purpose. So say I've got two or three vehicles on the road, and they're getting ran on all the time. Obviously, I'm going to go through brakes, I'm going to go through tires, I'm going to go through a lot of things with a lot of repairs, that's going to break down. You have one officer driving his own car, the mileage is down, and that maintenance goes way down. So the cost of maintenance, I think, would offset that, and I would just like to see what it would be for if we went for $30 per month per officer, if you wanted to go for free. And I know the high spectrum was the 50, I'm just asking to see if you guys would be willing to do the middle ground.
I think that the $50 rate was what it would cost when the gas was $2.75, I believe was.
I didn't vote Biden, that's my card.
Well, what I'm saying is I think $50 has been barely covered, covered the cost of the town when the gas was $2.75, so I would not be willing to amount to a $3 mark, because we are trying this out, and I think $50, I think this would be low at this point with gas being $4 a gallon. I would be willing to try it, I just realized that I was going, no, no, I'm not, but I'd go for it.
I think it's a slap in the face to the police officers.
For what?
To charge them anything.
Right, they're already having to pay gas bills right here, so it's actually a beautiful one to save money in my pocket.
I think we're missing the point about the presence.
I think their presence is important, but I also, I think that the first year trying, and that's we didn't, I don't think that we had in our budget to pay for the extra gas that they're going to be driving to and from. I think it's more than fair to offer it free for the officers who live in town. We have officers that live in Union County and different places like that, who are, that's going to add some air to their vehicles.
Yeah. So we go back to.
Add some more to it, but.
The very first thing that you said, you want them to be able to drive where for.
The cars, the cars will be used for, obviously, work purposes. Obviously, to go home and back and forth. Also to training that they would have, that they would have to go to, say, we're training with Connersville, and the training's in Connersville, or we're in Greensburg, or we're in Indianapolis, we have to go to the academy. Obviously, those vehicles, we still use our vehicles to do that anyway. But the good thing about having these cars is that I'm not shorthanded cars, right? Because if that guy has that training, he can get his car going, it doesn't put a burden on my department, but everyone else. So if they would come into town, say, a guy wants to come into town and get a haircut, I would think that having that officer and that car present being here is going to deter crime by seeing that officer. That officer's there, also puts that officer in that situation that he can't help or act when he's in that. And I think that's a big deterrent by putting more cars on the road. Now, I'm not asking for them to drive within the county, we're going where. If they would come into town to get a haircut, or go to the grocery store, or go to the car wash, or go to the Gilman's or wherever, I think having those cars present, with more cars being out there, I think community would feel a little bit safer when they see a lot more cop cars. They see a lot of cop cars right now, but I'd like to flood that as much as I can.
Well, last time I talked about this conversation, that we said that officers who live in town have that luxury, and not out of town. I thought that was, was that the one we talked about?
I didn't hear you, Brooke.
I heard the last time, that this conversation, that we discussed that they have luxury for officers that live in town, maybe just for things like that, but I don't know if we're discussing that throughout time.
We had the discussion about driving on, using the amenities, but we never got into that discussion, and that's why I brought that back up, because that was something that we were still talking about. It is a debate. Kill the point, it's just, I want to clarify that that's something that you guys were allowing not to happen, so that I'm clear. If not, then it is what it is. I also want to stress that I talked to quite a few chiefs and quite a few sheriffs. You want Franklin County alone, they do not charge their deputies to drive their car. Their deputies drive their car all year round, anywhere they go. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for when an officer comes into town that can work and provide a medical service, when he's in that car, he has to act if something happens. That's, to me, is a great asset to the community. And I think that that would not be something that would be asking too much. If you guys think that that is too much as far as gas-wise, and again, talking with Batesville, Rushville, Greensburg, Connersville, Union County, Franklin County, Lawrenceburg, all them, they don't charge their officers for that, and they are all allowed to drive their cars if they go to the amenities. So I'm basically asking whatever they'll ask.
Something that, like when I'm on the way home in the afternoon, so I come, I'm coming 52 into Brookville from Metlboro, and I'll pass two or three deputies every day at the same time, they're going out for work, I'm sure. But other people don't know that. Other people, you know, they're hitting the brakes, they're slowing down, they're speeding.
Why look at it like this? Anyone of you who already wants to be in the audience, or one of your loved ones can be out in the town driving around, someone has a heart about it. And that officer has his car right there, he drives up on that. You can't put money on it. If my mom or your parent, anyone, I think that that's what we're here for, I think that's what our job is. Our job is here to help anyone when it needs to be, and take care of the bad people when they act. And the only way you can do that is be put in the situations where you get that chance. And I think if that guy has a car, and he's coming into town to get groceries, and something happens, and if he didn't have that car, the chances of him being able to do his job, he's not going to be able to do a job with having that office, his car, his tools at stake. So that's what I'm saying, and that's what a lot of other towns and cities look at that, and they see that, hey, you know what, we're providing that service for the community. And I think that that outweighs a cost when it comes to, even if that saved one person's life or helped one person, that way pays for itself, and the way I look at that. And as far as the price goes, as far as the gas, I'm not going to, I don't want to fight or argue, but I'll do whatever you guys want to do, I just stay splitting that based off of always, well, what's the other town doing? Well, what's that agency doing? I'm always comparing and taking data and doing it. So I did that, and the data shows that the majority of the police departments don't pay for gas.
Have you done that recently, Terry?
Yeah, I talked, I already said, I already called and sent notes and showed everybody that they did that. The only person around me that pays for it is Connersville, and that's $50 a month. And then when I talk to Greensburg, because I'll get them confused, I think it's Greensburg, or basically, one of the two, they were charged $25. It was either $25 or something of that nature, because I don't have that paper in front of me, that they were disbanding that this year because of the fact that the maintenance costs offset the amount for gas. And that's what all the chiefs are telling me, because of the maintenance goes down. So when you look at that, because when they did, like, I guess, a study, it showed that that offset the gas. And I don't know that unless we do that here to see if $30 and the. And I don't know that unless we do that here to see if thirty dollars in the maintenance can offset the scene of what that price would be. And starting at the high spectrum, at fifty, or starting at zero, I mean, that's a big jump, but if we stepped in the middle to try to see where we're at, I think that's negotiable. And I think that's fair.
So I think two thoughts that I have. In terms of the savings on maintenance, I could see that if it was simply to and from work, but when you open up kind of like an open-ended drive, as I'm doing in Brookville, it's going to be hard to quantify. The other thing, I think that if we're applying the test that we did with Brent about trying to get the information available to make the decision, I'd like to take it under advisement and look at what your figures were before, we still have those, seeing where we're spending money. My hopes for the officers are, they're spending their dollars coming to work anyways, just as an employee does, and everybody pays for that, and they're not going to wear any air in their own vehicle, so they're already having added benefit to that. So I just want to make sure that it's fair, that we're treating all departments kind of the same. If we're asking, you know, a couple weeks for us to make a decision on the street department, I think it's fair to do that same for this, and then you have the right information to move out there. I mean, I think we've all agreed that we're going to do the take-home option, just trying to figure out the way that is prudent to the taxpayers, but also gives, you know, it does increase the police presence. I mean, I see the prison contractors like to take under advisement for another couple weeks and really get the numbers.
The cars, the cars are actually being worked on, so I don't know when we'll have those done, but I just started yesterday, he's got the first car and starting to work on the first cars. I don't know that they will be done within a week, two weeks? I don't know. That's why I was trying to bring, to see if we could get some type of closure in this, so that when it's up and running, I can go ahead and start assigning and getting it taken care of.
I think if a couple board members want to volunteer to work with the three of you guys, you know, outside of meeting, that would be, if you had a Chuck in here, want to take a look at it, then feel free to volunteer to look at it.
I'll do that.
If anybody else wants to join the Chuck team, outside of the board, any volunteer?
I can do that. I'd like a little bit more time to read this, too.
It's basically the standard, it's a standard take-home policy of our agency, also.
Yeah, I skipped over, I've got a couple questions, but we can talk about it. Outside of meetings, fine.
So is there a motion to table the SFPs for the take-home vehicles until following meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Captain made a motion, is there a second? Show us that, I'm there, pose, motion carried. Got the house brush?
One thing that came to my attention was actually a question from Bridget, asked about any rules of procedure that the town council has. The, my understanding, I thought that when it had been adopted, and I think it was adopted by a motion as far as public comment at the end of last year, and I don't know if that's something you want to revisit to work on making that process more coordinated and more efficient. You have, there's a lot of confusion over the way governmental meetings work. If there's a public hearing, there's an absolute right to speak, but that right to speak can still be regulated reasonably. Public meetings, you have quite a bit of latitude on those. It's not an absolute right under Indiana law. The right at a public meeting is the right to attend and to record. Most of my boards certainly go beyond that and allow participation, but I think there are ways that you can look into potentially making that more productive. One thing that I think is useful is encouraging advanced sign-up with topics and specific questions. One of the reasons for that is a lot of questions can be answered ahead of the meeting and don't need to take up the time at the meeting, because it is your business meeting to focus on getting through business. Another reason is if you know ahead of time and you can prepare for it. I know as an attorney, people think I know every single statute ever adopted by the state of Indiana, and every ordinance off the top of my head, but believe it or not, they don't teach you every single one in law school. So if there is time to prepare, for me, that helps as well, and then if we need numbers, if we need a report, follow-up with somebody, that's helpful. I tend to think that also just, that brings coordination. It is a representative system where you folks are elected to represent the entire populace, not just a person who shows up to ask a question at a particular meeting. And I think having a more coordinated, productive comment can help with that. I mean, it's certainly up to you, this is just, I've represented multiple boards and seen some things that turned into absolute chaos. It had, it was a public hearing and it was four hundred people, and I think everyone got up and talked, and we were there for six hours, but it was a public hearing, so that's what we had to do. But I think in a lot of other contexts and a lot of things, you can avoid some repetition, get some coordination, and get a lot more productive responses to people if there is some consideration taken in advance. And if that's something you want to look into, you can adopt more formal rules of procedure, you don't have to do that if things, I mean, right now, things seem like they're going relatively smoothly. But it's something that, to me, just increases the productivity of the meeting and helps the system operate the way that the system is actually supposed to operate.
I think it sounds, sounds good. Anything else?
That sounds helpful.
Do you want me to throw together something for discussion purposes?
I think it'd be.
I think that would work.
Okay. And I'll warn people, I mean, because if somebody sees it, I tend to throw some extra things in that probably you won't end up wanting, but that way you know their options. I know when I drafted one for county council, they stripped out several provisions, and that's fine, but that way you've got some things there and some options you can talk about.
Need that in the formal motion?
No, I can, yeah, I can just start looking into that if that's a general census and get something brought back.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Greg?
Need to pay the heating bill again.
I know.
Tim and I do an interview, utilities operator position next Thursday, so today I'd like to go ahead and offer that prospect, the full-time job for the utilities operator, which we posted, I think, two weeks ago.
Are they skilled operators?
So the equipment that Tim had asked him, he was comfortable with, he was, so every piece of equipment that Tim asked, he could run that equipment, if that answers your question. That's how we posted the job, as utilities operator, we weren't exactly sure how to work it, so that's how we ordered it. But I think that, like I said, Tim, this came after we posted that. Yeah, so sorry.
Operator for what position?
Water.
Waste water.
Waste water.
And water, right?
And water.
So you've found someone.
Did, yes.
So then we don't need to, we need to move a part-time guy up for Brent.
Good job.
Right, but we don't really, now we're not kind of pushed to look for an operator.
No, I'm sorry. So we call it, I wouldn't say operator, we came up with that job description prior to this conversation. Yeah, he's not an equipment operator, he's utilities operator, I don't even know how outside of work that.
So when you went through the hiring process, how many candidates did we have?
Wow.
My only concern is that if we move forward with hiring a candidate, when we know there's a need for an equipment operator, if they don't have those proper credentials, if we make that approval tonight, we look at it, it's not in the budget or without an operator down there for this year. That's my only concern, with that.
And I don't know. I mean, I know that he can run a backhoe, you know, a couple, like I said, Tim had asked him a couple things, and he said yes, but I, I don't know what those reasons are, if I'm being honest.
Do you think that person could be called in to have Brent also, and maybe Brent and Tim can refine to in the question maker that, uh, had it now that we've discussed the need to leave town at this meeting?
Sure.
Brent, I can't see you. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
I said, I asked Jesse if she thought that it would be appropriate for maybe you and Tim to sit down with that candidate that she was talking about, to maybe refine to in the question to see if that, um, has the skills to operate the equipment that we would need to fill the void we have.
In all that shower, they're going to cross collaborate, just like we always have, so I think it'd be nice to get his take on it first.
Sure.
And kind of the expectation for both of you was to really drill in on, is that going to fill the void, or are we, are we not filling that void at all?
Did you fill this what we had before? You know, I'm understanding that you might.
Yeah, I just meant like in terms of the operator, Adam and Ryan were both skilled operators, so if we're bringing in someone that has a little experience, similar to what Brett and Rocky, are we really replacing or filling that gap there Adam and Ryan left?
Yeah, that's a tough, you know, question. You know, like I said, we're getting some pretty curious places, you know, so, you know, I don't know much knowledge as far as, you know, maybe wire lines or that kind.
Have you talked to Ryan? If, for parts of life, and come back and make the contract role to do that, if we have an emergency situation, are we able to contract out versus having a full-time operating on staff that? Maybe, I mean, in the short term, maybe a good conversation to see if he's willing or if the SEALs are willing to. I mean, that's what they're doing now, they're up digging as well.
What if we do this? What if we have Tim and Brent meet with the candidate, but also, like Tim pointed out, with the postings that we put on Facebook to attract more candidates, so that we are looking for a more specified person that has these skills, and we repost on Facebook advertising, these are the qualifications that we are looking for, like we're finding with, um, the void is to put down, we're talking to Brent, and also call that same candidate back and ask some other serious questions to see if he means the new things that we didn't necessarily know we had in the first year that took place.
Did any of the board members sit in on the interviews?
No.
No.
Probably advise me for at least one of us to sit in, I mean, we have in the past for candidates.
I think someone's a good idea, yourself, too. Yeah, but when you're talking operator, that's just what the person calls themselves. They say that they're an operator. They don't have an official license or permit that they are licensed to operate a backhoe or a bucket, is that correct?
I can't answer that, but I honestly don't know if people have certain licenses or anything.
All right. I just wondered for insurance purposes more than anything, real people just be insured.
From what I heard from saying when he initially pitched, was that we had two employees who were excellent at operating the equipment. Those two employees are all worth the town. So we are now without someone who is really well-skilled in that, and so there's a gap there that we need to replace. We're hiring for an operator at the wastewater water, which is just the title, it doesn't mean that they operate equipment, they operate that facility. I think what we need to look at is if we're hiring that, do we need to hire someone with the skill or not? Otherwise, we're going to need to have, we're going to have to have that fourth guy, we're going to have to have a guy that can operate equipment. So if we move forward with this tonight, we're essentially saying, we might as well just say, hey, go ahead and advertise, because we need that.
Good.
So I would recommend, like Brooke said, having the three, Brent, Tim, and Jess sit in, and then pull in a board member as well, and then make that call the next meeting, too. I hate to push everybody down the road, but.
Well, the thing about this one town is, you know, we knew, you know, these people.
Right.
And they grew up on these things, so, you know. Someone can say, you know, I'm not saying anything, but someone can say that, you know, they operated out loud.
References.
Yeah, I think references will be important for that as well. Definitely have to reference their past job experience. What were you going to say?
Nothing, just too low. Same language, new business. Just give all the way.
I would also feel like you see if there's one Facebook with those clearer memes, things that really want to be more clear, so that if there are other applicants that would be interested, I don't want to leave you with a greater chance of them attracted and want to work with the posting.
Make sure the right person.
Sure. My thing, I guess we can, I think that my idea of a person might be fantastic, I don't know.
Sure.
But the first is, I've heard, come, Brent, we're finding a school, it's unfair to go out and put that department ahead, so that we can.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Anything else, Josh?
No, that's all, sorry, that's all I have.
Gina.
Thanks.
Shirley, anything tonight?
Do you have anything tonight?
No.
Captain, have a comment about the agenda?
I've got other questions, and I was hoping I'd be able to speak by Gina and Brent.
If you want to go ahead and ask, if you've got a question you want to ask, I don't like, I don't have a lot of answers, but then we can get back to you if we don't. I know you sent the general questions in yesterday. I think Gina did get you, were you able to get into?
Resolution.
Okay.
And I have a stuff request, which she said she was going to make. So I'll take the questions and then just. I have a question for the media's comments. Brooke, can you make a comment on Facebook that some of the tax rate increase for the town is for the golf course and the building and the pool? That the pool represents fifty percent of the total new debt that was issued? I'm just looking for a further explanation why the pool was included in the new debt. Because it seems like a misleading comment to the taxpayers since it was not a public comment area, since I asked a direct question during the budget hearing and the lease agreement hearing, that the two payments that were only included in the bond were for the golf course and the center building. Then my next question is, the bond payment for the golf course, or I would say the lease payment for the golf courses, if it hasn't changed, it would be ninety-five thousand dollars per year, and for the municipal city project, it's seventy-five thousand dollars per year, which is about around one hundred and seventy thousand dollars of taxpayer money, but the only thing that was levied was one hundred and forty thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-nine. I wanted to know where the difference was coming from, because it seems that it would have to come from another tax increase, be additional appropriation in the rest of the year or anything, because it looks like there's a one-point-five-million-dollar difference when you calculate the lease payments out for twenty-two years compared to the bond of two-point-two million, and the lease payment twenty-two years out is three-point-seven million dollars. And I just wanted to update the total for the pool and the year financials.
Yeah, we can get with Gina, and we can work on, seeing if there's responses on some of those. Thanks, Derek. Thanks, Terry.
Any other comment? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Captain, the motion to adjourn, is there a second? Chuck, that's a call, please. Close, motion carried.